Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 18th Board of Education meeting. We're going to start off by introducing our high school students, Lucy Ann Morgan, to give us their high school update.
Good evening, everyone. The choir, orchestra, and band came back recently from performing at Disney World. The marching band marched down Main Street, and the orchestra and choir performed and took part in a workshop ran by Disney to further their music knowledge. All participants are very grateful for this amazing opportunity, and they all had a great time. Rock Against Cancer was a huge success. The Eastchester community watched our talented students and staff perform, and EGO raised over $3,000 for Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center. The high school PTA held a female awareness self-defense course designed to make our students more aware and prepared for any situation. The middle and high school girls spent two hours learning safety techniques and how to deal with confrontation, as well as 23 strikes. The annual junior class Stay Awake-a-thon was a lot of fun. The students participated in competitive sports tournaments, sang karaoke, and enjoyed time with friends. Thanks to everyone who helped make this event possible. Congratulations to the Eastchester chess team for coming in second place in the annual Westchester Chess League tournament. All of the members played well and enjoyed testing their strategies against opponents from other schools. Walk to School Day is this Friday. Free snacks will be provided to all of those who choose to walk. All students, please participate to help promote the reduction of our carbon footprint. If you are interested in running for an EGO position, you must attend the mandatory meeting on April 24th at 7:00 p.m. in the cafeteria. We encourage students to partake to help bring the changes to the school that they want to see and keep Eastchester High School an encouraging and supportive environment. Going Green is having a bake sale this Thursday and Friday during all lunch periods. All proceeds will go to the club. The EHS Music Department is selling its first cookbook, including over 100 family recipes from the students. The cookbooks are $30 and can be purchased from the Google form sent by the PTA. We'd like to ask the Eastchester community to vote for varsity lacrosse captain Cece Murray for Lo-Hud's Girls Lacrosse Player of the Week and sophomore Alyssa Pedudo for Lo-Hud Softball Player of the Week. The link can be found in the EHS Eagle Nation Instagram account bio. Eastchester has a new addition to our spring athletic teams. The girls' flag football team have kicked off their season with two blowout games. Good luck, girls. We are looking forward to watching you play the rest of the season. The Class of 2025 is running a spirit fundraiser. You can purchase a 3x16-inch ribbon that can be displayed on a door or window. The donations will support the Class of 2025 and the Play for Ten Foundation. You can purchase one by check addressed to Eastchester High School and it can be mailed to the school. The Players Club Spring Musical Spamalot is this weekend, on Friday and Saturday at 7:00 and Sunday at 2:00. Come to see this hilarious Monty Python spinoff. There may be some guest appearances from Flying Cows, a can of Spam, and maybe even God Himself. Tickets are now available on eastchester/booktix.com. The performers are working extra hard to make it memorable, so please support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy Ann Morgan. Looking forward to seeing Spamalot this weekend. Okay, I have just a very brief Board President's Report this evening. Just want to give the community a brief update on DEI. We did meet with a consultant from BOSI's recently, which went very well, so we're proceeding with our partnership. We also had our very first reconvening of the DEI committee and basically wanted to see who was coming back from last year. And at this point, we will be breaking up into building-level committees. There will be some open spots for parents, and we will be working out all the details, sending out a survey to parents who may be interested in applying to volunteer for that. And Susan Chester and Madeline Laboue will be the co-facilitators of the DEI committee. And as we get more information, I will be sure to update you. And that is it for me tonight, and we are up to the superintendent's report.
Great. I'll take that at the... Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board, members of the Eastchester community, those of you who are here alive and those to whom we are streaming. We have a RICH program tonight. One of the more important things that we want to do is see what our students are doing, and so we always start off at student presentations. We'd like to begin, first of all, with the WISE program. I'm sure folks here in Eastchester are very familiar with WISE. It is definitely a program geared towards students, internships, and learning what happens in the adult world of work. And it's fairly widespread, not only throughout the state of New York, but elsewhere, and a program that's much heralded, particularly for our seniors. So this evening, we're delighted to have some of our students who will be serving internships. And I'd like to begin by introducing our faculty member WISE coordinator, Mr. Julie Myers. Julie, would you come and join us, please? The mic is yours.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Julie Myers. I am one of the high school counselors. This is my 23rd year here at Eastchester and my sixth year running the WISE program. When I took over the WISE program six years ago, I reimagined it as more than just a senior internship at the end of senior year. I was interested in making it a comprehensive program of career education for all of our seniors. So WISE allows students who are graduating an opportunity, instead of coming to school the end of their senior year, to do either an internship, a passion project, or a service opportunity. So students spend the whole year in WISE, doing different lessons, and then at the end of it, the culminating part of WISE will be going out onto an internship or doing their project, and then presenting at the end at the WISE showcase. They get a grade for WISE and a half a credit. So as I said, WISE is more than just an internship. There are four modules, so that is a classroom lesson on some aspect of career education. So we start out with career exploration. They read a book called The Biggs. We read two chapters in that per module, so this is different career advice that they get from the book, as well as from me. They learn to write a resume. They write their own resume. They learn about workplace etiquette, professionalism, what to say, what not to say, you know, all different of those soft skills of things on how to do a great job, how to be noticed in your job, not just in your internship, but this is to help them in their future careers. Then they start a four-to-six-week internship. The students start at the end of senior year, so students who are taking APs will start the day after their last AP exam. Students who are not taking APs will start on May 1st. And they go until June 16th, which is the week before graduation. At the end of their internship, they will present at the WISE showcase, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. So seniors who are in their fourth year of high school and on track to graduate, they go to WISE. They have to be passing all their courses, meeting all their graduation requirements before they leave for WISE. And there are assignments each module that they have to complete, and they learn that those have to be on time, because when you go to work and you have a deadline, you have to meet that deadline. And so I hold them to some of those same expectations that they can expect in the workplace. So I come into their classes four times a year to give a lesson on different aspects of career education. I have certain expectations of them. Now, I just went in today for my fourth visit to them, and they all knew what to do as soon as I walked in. So, you know, they've been training with me essentially all year, and, you know, they've learned what the expectations are. The students are in charge of their WISE experience, from doing the assignments to meeting with me, to meeting with potential sponsors and getting their internships. And they will spend 25 hours a week throughout WISE on their internship or working on their project. So I help the students find an internship. I have about 150 sites that I have worked with over a number of years, and each year I develop new sites. I would say each year, you know, we increase 10 to 15 sites, so that we're always growing, we're always reaching out in the community and trying to, you know, get community members, local businesses, to host our students. Students can also find their own site. Some students have a strong interest in a particular area and opt to do a passion project. They have to put together a proposal, which they submit to me, and they have multiple meetings with me to help refine that project idea. We get feedback from other faculty members regarding the project, and then they work on their project throughout WISE. Students will meet with a mentor weekly throughout WISE, so they'll meet with a teacher, someone they select on the staff, who they'll meet with once a week to troubleshoot any issues that come up with WISE, talk about their experience, and generally work through the experience with them. About 10 to 15 students each year opt to do a passion project, and those are my favorites. They're very interesting. We have different proposals every year. This year, we have some really interesting project proposals. I'm really excited for that. But in the past, I had a student get their pilot's license. Two students did an aerospace project last year. We've had students design jewelry, open up their own Etsy store, you know, and start their own business. I had a student who translated traditional Japanese music into violin music, so she wrote all the music. She had to convert it and then perform that. So some interesting projects over the years, and this year is no exception. At the end of WISE, the students will present at what's called the WISE showcase, and this is set up expo-style, so students will get a presentation board from me, which they have to decorate, and I brought some samples. They're behind you, so you can sort of see these were some of the boards from last year. And the students will decorate the board, which really kind of encapsulates what they did out on WISE. And then we have them set up, and we have half the students will be presenting, while the other students will be walking around and asking questions. Parents come. Hopefully, board members will come this year as well. And we hope to get as many community members here at the showcase to see what the students are doing, to get you as excited as we are to see the progress that they make over the four to six weeks of WISE and over the course of the year. There are also some students who are working in our elementary schools. There are students, we have a student working in the business department, so, you know, they're involved with the school community, as well as the neighboring community. We have some students who go to the city, and we have, like I said, some students who do projects. The middle board is a student who got his pilot's license as his project for WISE. So some interesting things over the years. So the showcase is attended by all the students in WISE, their parents, teachers, sponsors, and we hope as many community members as would like to attend. We are having the showcase on Thursday, June 15th at 6:00 p.m., and I'll be sending out an invitation to everyone, which will be a little video invitation that some of the students put together. So each year, one or two students put together a WISE documentary, so they go around to a lot of the different sites, and they put together a 10-minute film on the WISE program featuring students, you know, in action at their sites. And we watch the documentary at the start of the showcase, and that's always a nice event. And all the previous documentaries are available on the WISE website if you ever wanted to view any of them. That's the WISE program in a nutshell. And all the information on the showcase, as well as the previous documentaries and pictures, blogs, all that is up on the WISE website, on the high school website.
Any questions, anything?
Mr. Holstein is a sponsor.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as a longtime sponsor of students, sometimes two in one year. This year, only one. I may have some other distractions that may, you know, make having two tough this year. But I just, I can say, and also having three kids who went through the program, two under your guidance, or one who's about to start under your guidance. I think it's wonderful. I think it's wonderful, and I see the differences of how it is now versus how it was, you know, when you first came on board with this, just in terms of, you know, I always get an email from a student or two, you know, advocating for themselves, asking, you know, to become a WISE student, presenting a resume, inquiring, you know, about the roles. And I try my best to keep them engaged and give them real work, you know. I give them projects. And actually, two, maybe three, two of my, two of my WISE students came back as interns. One came back twice as an intern during his college years for summer. So, you know, it's a great program, and I am pleased and thank you for what you do for it and for our kids. And, you know, I'm just very proud of it. And I have to ask the question, did the student actually get his pilot's license in six weeks?
No, he had been working on that over the years, but he never had enough time to devote to, you know, getting all the flying hours and then studying the manual. So he did end up by getting his license a couple of weeks after WISE ended.
Still very impressive.
Yes. It was very impressive. Yeah, exactly.
Great job. My question is more for the parents and the public. What percentage, do you know offhand, what percentage of our student body take advantage of the program, of our graduates?
I would say about 90 to 95% of the students.
Really? Is that high?
Yeah, it is pretty high. We have some students who are unable to participate for a variety of reasons, maybe one or two who choose not to do it, but it's a very small number. I would say maybe 20 to 25 students in the senior class this year will not be going to WISE, but the rest do go out.
That's terrific. That's really good. Thank you.
Julie, were any students able to join us tonight in walks?
Well, we do have a student who's here, and he prepared a little, something to say. He's gonna be working in the business office. Sure. Come on up, Johnson.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Johnson Garba, and I'm a senior at Eastchester High School. I'm excited to be studying my WISE, the WISE internship in the business office of Eastchester School District. I plan to major in accounting in college. This opportunity will help me to prepare for college and my future career. Even though I have not been in the classroom, I feel as though Eastchester is still teaching me so much. I am excited to work in the office environment and learn more about working in that type of setting. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to learn from you.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Lee Lu, you're off the hook these days now, hey? You got somebody. Just when we adopt the budget, he would come along. Okey-dokey. So now that we have the WISE program, can we move to the next program, which is our Middle School Science Olympiad? It's the first year of the middle school club. And you want to readjust this? Yep. And we're going to invite the principal of the middle school to do the honorifics, introduce our middle school staff, and talk a little bit about the Science Olympiad. So let's welcome Madeline. Madeline Laboue. Yeah, very good.
I'd like to invite Ms. Handel to join me, the assistant principal as well. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Valenti, administration, and of course, our Eastchester learning community. It is our pleasure to introduce to you tonight the Eastchester Middle School's first-ever Science Olympiad team, which, under the guidance of Ms. Daniela Lory, seventh-grade science teacher, and Mr. Tom Boisino, our STEM teacher, provides an excellent opportunity for our students to engage in hands-on science experiments and activities, compare, they compete with other schools, and develop their critical thinking and problem-solving skills. This could not have been made possible without the generous support of the Eastchester School Foundation, who provided us with the funding necessary to start our chapter of Science Olympiad this year. So a little bit about Science Olympiad. Science Olympiad is a nationwide competition that covers a broad range of science topics, from biology to physics to earth science, and including STEM. Our students have the chance to explore these topics in depth, as well as work in teams to design and build projects and devices that demonstrate their understanding of scientific principles. Participating in Science Olympiad is not only an exciting and challenging experience for our students, but it also helps them develop important skills that will serve them well in their academic and professional careers. Through Science Olympiad, our students learn to work collaboratively, think critically, and compete and communicate effectively, all while gaining a deeper understanding of the natural world around them. I am happy to share that this past March, our Science Olympiad team had remarkable success in their first regional competition that took place at Scarsdale Middle School. Their work, dedication, and perseverance certainly paid off. I am thrilled to share with you tonight that they placed ninth out of 20 districts across the local area in our school's very first year competing in this competition. So they certainly deserve a round of applause. This is a tremendous accomplishment, and it speaks volumes about their commitment to learning and passion for science and STEM. And it is a true example that shows our students that with determination and teamwork, we can succeed at highest levels. Our Science Olympic team has been a valuable addition to our school community, and I'm confident that our students will excel in future competitions. Ms. Handel and I are extremely proud of our students and their advisors for their outstanding performance and hard work, and we hope that this achievement will inspire our students to continue pursuing their science interests and to strive for excellence in all that they do. They have made our school community very proud, and we have no doubt that they will continue to achieve great things in the future. Ms. Handel and I thank you all very much for your support. I'd like to invite Ms. Irene Iainuzi, our supervisor of STEM, to the podium.
Good evening. What you're gonna see tonight is the product of months of hard work and preparation. And for a moment, I'd like you to step inside the classroom after school and see and hear what STEM Olympiad is all about. I've been fortunate enough to have visited these amazing students during club on a number of occasions. Each of those times, the rooms were abuzz with students asking questions, researching, solving real-world, authentic problems. I watched as students put their heads and minds together and talked animatedly about what they thought and why. I heard them consider constraints and listened as they brainstormed creative solutions. I watched as students analyzed, argued, considered, and worked together towards a common purpose, and had fun while doing it. I think we can all agree that this is the classroom, not just of the future, but of the now. Collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity are the hallmarks of a 21st century learning. Science Olympiad is just one of, one example of the many ways that we are preparing our students for the future. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board, the Eastchester Schools Foundation, and Dr. Valenti for supporting our STEM programs and initiatives so that we can best prepare our students for the future. It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Daniela Lory and Mr. Tom Boisino, the co-advisors of the Science Olympiad.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniela Lory, and I'm a seventh-grade science teacher at Eastchester Middle School, as well as the co-founder and co-advisor of Science Olympiad. My co-advisor, Tom Boisino, and I are thrilled to be here tonight to be able to share more with you about Science Olympiad and the amazing accomplishments of our students this year. First off, we'd like to thank Dr. Valenti and the Board of Education for having us tonight at this meeting to share these experiences, as well as to the Eastchester School Foundation for the grant funds. It really would not have been possible without that. So just the outpouring of support that we've gotten across the board from the Eastchester community has been super, super valuable and helpful. It takes a village to make this club operate. It was months, like Dr. Iainuzi said, of hard work and a lot of different people that contributed to it. So from Mrs. Madeline Laboue, Janelle Handel, Dr. Irene Iainuzi for support in establishing the program, our chaperones for the regional competition. We were at Scarsdale Middle School for probably over 12 hours on a Saturday. So Mrs. Suzie Wilson and Ms. Anisha Williams. Everyone that helped us with our ordering of supplies. There was a lot of that involved, so everyone from the business office and from the Eastchester Middle School. Mrs. Gina DiMarco, Mrs. Patty Claricio, Mrs. Rapalda Arena, Gina Lanza, Dr. Eric Furman, one of the high school science teachers, for kind of coordinating with us on the Rocks and Minerals event that we competed in. Dr. Helena Wong for preparing materials for our solar system unit. She's one of the Science Olympiad team members' parents that helped us with that. Mr. Michael Smith for always advertising and making the information available to the community about this team. Mrs. Christine Raichard for helping us with transportation and the busing for the event. All of the Scarsdale Middle School staff and community, including Mr. Jay Gandelman, who organizes the regional competition. And then, of course, all of the team families and their children for participation this year. So just to give you kind of an overview of what Science Olympiad is, and some other people mentioned it as well, but it's really this national organization that prepares students in tons of different STEM events, ranging in a variety of topics. And I always like to say it's like a sports competition for science. It's this really team-based type experience. And really where this came from this year was a conversation that I had with Mrs. Laboue about what I saw for Eastchester and what I saw for my career here. And this was something that came up, and she was so supportive of it, and it really just took off from there. Some of the events that we prepare in, there's 18 that we prepare in each year, and it's topics that typically, for students, is not something they cover in great detail in their regular middle school curriculum. It ranges from topics in biology to physics to building of devices. And it's really just incredible what these students have been able to do, that it's these really advanced topics that they just took in such stride. Some of the achievements from the day of the competition, they won the ninth-place overall trophy out of 20 districts. They won first place in the first-ever poster contest that they hosted for the event. We'll hold that up a little bit later. They placed third and earned a medal in botany out of 32 teams. They placed seventh in Can't Judge a Powder, which is a chemistry event. Seventh in Storm the Castle, which we also have with us as one of the trebuchet devices. Eighth place in forestry. And then 10th place in Crave the Wave, which is one of the physics events. And then they also placed top 15 in six other events. I'd quickly just like to read through the names. Like I said, it's really these kids that were just so impressive this year and so dedicated. So Tatiana Alexander, Julia Aliotti-Passi, Katerina Artemenko, Matthew Cabral, William Chang, Samara Chertok, Ethan Chung, Maris Gingeri, Samarth Goindy, Harrison Harmon, Jonathan Hart, Zhang Li, Kayla Long, Nicholas Malley, Ken New, Justin Park, Georgina Partridge, Nicholas Ramos, Annabella Santiago Scheck, Alexandra Senna, Kohei Tada, Alex Tang, Yusuke Sang, Catherine Wong, and Annabelle Wu. And this is just some pictures from the day of the event. They were just thrilled, and that's their poster that they're holding up there. That's another one. And then I'd like to welcome our student presenters, William Chang, Samara Chertok, and Nicholas Ramos.
Hi, my name is William Chang, and I am a sixth-grade student at Eastchester Middle School. I joined Science Olympiad because it was an interesting club that introduced STEM that a friend introduced me to. The thing I enjoyed the most about Science Olympiad was the hands-on activities like Storm the Castle and flight competitions. I was part of a build event called Flight, which involves building an aircraft, like a glider, plane, helicopter, et cetera. The goal of the competition was which aircraft can stand the air the longest. This was a good experience that introduced me to, me to aerodynamics and other features of flight. flight. Science Olympiad was a very interesting and educational club, and I hope this club will continue into the future.
My name is Samara Chertok, and I am in 6th grade. I'm a member of the Science Olympiad Club. I joined Science Olympiad because I have a passion for science and wanted to join an extracurricular activity. I had a great time working hands-on with my friends in the club. Ms. Lory and Mr. Boisino made this a great experience. I had an amazing time working on all of the projects and activities. Me and other participants in the club made a car from scratch. This car was rubber band-powered and had a braking system to send it to the preferable distance. If it were not for Mr. B giving up his lunch periods, we would not have gotten 11th place out of over 30 participating schools in the competition. Science Olympiad's first year would not have been successful if it were not for Ms. Laboue, Ms. Hindell, Mr. Win, and Dr. Valenti's support in the club. Ms. Lory and Mr. B made this year amazing, and I would not have had this great experience without them. I hope that this year's club will continue throughout my years in the Eastchester School District. I cannot wait for these years to come. Thank you.
Good evening to everybody here. My name is Nicholas Ramos, and I am an 8th grade student at EMS. I personally, with my partner Samarth, participated in the Storming the Castle event with the trebuchet there. Throughout, the reason I joined Science Olympiad was to engage in STEM projects in our community outside of just the school learning environment, where I learned how to, where I learned different parts of science, such as biology, physics, and even stuff outside of that, such as teamwork and communication skills. I learned different functions of the trebuchet and, in other events, different facets of the immune system. One of the things I enjoyed most about the Science Olympiad was being able to create and learn with my friends for incredibly extended periods of time beyond the simple scope of classes and school. I was able to spend time after school simply working and hanging out with my friends while still being able to make progress on our final event throughout the entire year. For Storming the Castle, it was split up, we were creating a trebuchet, which was split up into three major categories: how far you could throw two separate payloads, how accurate you were, and how consistently you were that accurate. From the guidance of Ms. Lory and Mr. Boisino, I was able to score, I was able to become a top-10 medalist inside of that thing for the first year ever competing in this. I've learned, for the club, I've learned an incredible amount of information based off of physics and engineering in general, which I had no access to beforehand, and I am incredibly grateful for their expertise and coaching ability throughout this time. Thank you.
We brought some of the, well, we brought the build events with us, so we can, boy, this needs a little STEM. So, we'll break them out of the box.
Get a wireless mic.
So, this is what the base is for, and it, the base is forward, the wheels are made out of aluminum, and this was a stick, and the starting line, this was, um, the braking system is, is the, the weighter, if you go with, um, we have, uh, kind of like, um, it's, it's like, and the other thing, they can, um, and that's how it's, um...
So, this was the flight event, that's my event. It was an event that you had to fly the most amount of time in the year. There, I had seen a multitude of aircraft that were flying this time, so, it was pretty good.
So, this was the trebuchet for the Storming the Castle event. This is the base board, these are the arms, these are the supporting arms, this is the main throwing arm with the catch right here, which our very own William sewed together with his expert skills. We had, we were able to use, we were able to use tightly specified tools in order to cut out, measure, and specifically do every single angle measurement and cut of this wood. We made sure that it was exactly straight, the supporting arms, and that it would go in a perfectly straight line during the actual event. We also had a simple lock-and-release mechanism over here with a, with simple grasp mechanism, and a tiny hook thing and catch on the side in order to make sure that the ball, that the ball, uh, wouldn't be, um...
This was their poster that they earned the first-place trophy for. This they made on the day of the event, and they really, they put the message of Science Olympiad and Eastchester Middle School unites us, and they drew each of their team members around the globe for the Science Olympiad logo, and really, the artistic skills. I was so impressed. That's not my strong point, so what they did with that was incredible. They got the plaque for it, and then that's their ninth-place trophy. All right, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Ms. Laboue, before you sit down, just really quick, just one quick comment if I can, Chrissy. Thank you, and thanks to the entire team. This is really what it's all about. Thank you, guys, for going above and beyond for the students, and thank you for constantly questioning the status quo and changing things up and doing it. It doesn't go unnoticed, and it's greatly appreciated. So, thank you, guys.
So, I have a quick question before you leave. This is your first year. You're obviously going to have year two. Are there any additional ways the district can help you in year two that were not available to you in year one? Come to the microphone, yeah. I want the board to hear it, so that, right.
And Mr. B, it's okay to say you want lunch next year. That's okay.
Did you see that, by the way? I didn't skip many lunches. Well, we just want to thank you, guys. Making this club happen is, we actually, if I were to say anything, we need staff, and we need more staff, because we were stretched very thin to make it happen, and there was a big learning curve. But now, we know what we're doing, and we, I really want us, and we really want to go to state next year. I mean, that's our goal. We weren't that far off for our first year, so, everybody knows I love to talk, and I actually, it's kind of fun to hang back, because Ms. Lory came to me, and she's a new teacher, and I've been around the block a couple of times, I guess. But this really stretched me to make sure that these kids had everything, all the information they needed to do well in this, okay? So, one of the things you learn from Science Olympiad is that you've got to, and Teaching Gifted helped with this, but you've got to provide them with all of the information they need, all of the help they need, and we had 25 kids?
At the event, and then probably floating at regular meetings, anywhere from 25 to 35.
Right, so we had a lot of kids, and if we had more hands in the room, we could have broken the groups into smaller groups, and I think we could have done even better. So...
What place, like, what place did you need to get to, to be in state under scores? What did you need to?
I believe it was sixth.
Sixth, and we were ninth. Yeah, yeah. That's, well, thank you. That'd be awesome. But anyway, your support is heartfelt, and it was just terrific, and you can see that we had a great time. We really had a great time. Sure.
How often do you meet? Like, after school?
Once a week.
Once a week?
Yeah.
Wow. I mean, it was very impressive to see, you know, all the awards and to see the enthusiasm and, you know, really, it's apparent that your impact on the students extends far beyond the academics. So, hearing them speak about, you know, their experience with Ms. Lory and Mr., I want to say, I don't want to say her name...
It's Mr. B.
Mr. B. You know, really, I mean, that's just amazing, and, you know, always having been a science fan myself, it's so cool to see how excited the kids are about that. So, you know, thank you.
Oh, well, it's Ms. Lory, and everybody else that really pushed us through, so thank you.
Thank you for asking that question. I just want to add that we couldn't have done this, obviously, without the dedication that we have from the staff, and Ms. Lory and Mr. B did all, put in all the hours and dedication this year without compensation, so I am very grateful for them.
Thank you.
So, we have stipends for you.
You asked what we needed, so, yes.
So, you'll get me an email on that, all right? Very good. All right. Yeah, very good. Thank you. Did you want to say something?
We want to say one more.
Oh, yeah, come on, yeah.
So, before, when you asked if there's anything we could ask for, the only thing I must say is publicity, because if we were to, if you were to spread the achievements of the Science Olympiad after only the first year, we would be able to inspire a much more competitive spirit and a wanting for growth and achievement throughout all of our members, not just the incredibly devoted ones. So, for future years, I hope that we are able to create a much more intense, but still relaxed and welcoming environment for everybody, so that it can fit any student's individual needs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. Nice job, yeah. Now that we've seen the exploits of our students and faculty and administration, it's my pleasure to introduce some new administrators to the district. Lee Liu has served loyally and effectively, working with us to develop a wonderful budget that we'll talk about again in a moment, but she is interim, and Lee will be leaving us at the end of this school year. And we're delighted to introduce a new assistant superintendent for business, finance, and facilities. Let's welcome Louise Lynch. Louise, would you come up here? We're going to ask Louise to say a few words, but for the sake of the board and the community, they went through a very rigorous process. First of all, they were initially screened, then they came to a first-level committee of central administrators, then they came to a broader committee that involved some board members sitting around this table, as well as administrators, teachers, et cetera. And then, finally, they came to the level of the superintendent and the leadership in the district. So, through this rigorous process, Louise emerged as the top candidate. We're delighted to welcome her. She'll be doing some consultant work with us for a few days for transitional purposes, and she'll start effective July 1st. So, why don't you introduce yourself, Louise, please?
Thank you. First, I want to thank, you know, I'm both humbled and honored to have the support of Dr. Valenti, the board. I know there were teachers and union leadership and a huge constituent group there that was beyond welcoming. You know, again, I'm so impressed by your district and the enthusiasm here. I was regretting that I had to follow the students up, because I thought, ooh, that's just a tough way to start. But I will say that I'm really excited to be here. I have 23 years in business, school business administration, and it's nice to be back to Westchester, where, you know, people are really willing to provide opportunities that extend beyond basic academics for children. And I see it, it was so evident tonight, and it's just exciting. It's exciting to be here, and, you know, I guess the only other really interesting thing about me is I came up through the ranks as an accountant, and I just heard about a student who's going to be working in the business office, and I guess I'm going to miss that, but it's exciting that, you know, that's still being promoted. And while I've not been a teacher, I am a professional ski instructor, which is a little ironic, because when we talk about teaching style, I'll usually say, well, are you a visual learner? You know, I want to understand, but there are things that certainly, being an assistant superintendent, I have lots of understanding about, but teaching is generally, I'll look for some assistance there to understand. But thank you for the warm welcome, and it's a pleasure to be here.
Great. Okay, thank you. And we'll invite Louise, and of course Elliot, on, I think it's June 6th, Lory, when we have tenure night. We'll have meet and greet for her, and of course, for our outgoing administrators as well. I want to thank Peter Q for the work he has done. Peter is retiring at the end of this year, as the board knows, and we're delighted tonight to introduce our new director of facilities, who'll say a few words about himself. Elliot, come on up here. Elliot Sheldon, let's welcome him.
And introduce your wife? Yes. So, as you know, I'm Elliot Sheldon, your incoming director of facilities. Tonight, I brought my wife. We have four amazing children. We live in Duchess County in La Grange. I want to thank Dr. Valenti and the Board of Education for this opportunity. Give you a little history about myself, but not too much. I currently work for Hyde Park Central School District as their director of facilities. I started in 2017 as the assistant and was promoted to the director in July of 2019. Prior to that, I worked for a company down here in White Plains called the Whiting Turner Contracting Company. Some of you may be familiar with the Westchester Mall. We did a major renovation there in 2015 to 2017. I was part of that project. And even before Whiting Turner, I worked for a local construction management company called the Plumbow Group. There, I worked, actually, they had a general contracting side where I worked in the trenches with the guys, and then transitioned into the office. I'm excited about this opportunity. I really want to get to learn the facility staff of the building. That's one of my primary goals in my first couple of weeks. I also want to learn about all the buildings and the staff, and also inside the buildings. Probably won't get to meet everybody until the school year starts, but I'm excited for that opportunity, and then also to really dive into your capital project. You guys have a large bond out there, 75 million. At Hyde Park, I've overseen a $24 million project and planned a referendum in '22 for 35.7. So, I'm excited to learn about your capital project and assist the community and the Board of Education and all the staff and students of Eastchester. Thank you.
Shawna, stand up. We want to give you a round of applause, too. Thank you for coming down and visiting with us. Yes, a real pleasure. Okay. So, this is the last time we're going to talk about the budget this year. Are you sad? So, let me give you a quick recap, so no one can say we didn't do what we're supposed to do. Quick revenue overview. By the way, there are a lot of sheets in the back there. I hope folks took advantage of them, but there is information on revenue and expenditures, as well as the tax report card that we compiled... as well as the tax report card that we compiled, if anyone would like to have access to that information. Very briefly, we're presenting a budget. As you could see here, that's a 0% tax levy increase. You see where our revenue is coming from, and I think this is important. The real property tax, the difference, the delta, is zero. That's how you get to a zero tax rate increase. So tax property, property taxes are not increasing. State aid is really what's helping us to get to that point, let's be honest. Foundation aid, last year for it, you see an additional 3.6 million, and that helps us get to the 5.6 million. Last year for that bump, we'll continue with that level of aid, but there's not going to be another bump next year. So read the TID leaves, and I don't think another zero is in the works, but I do think what's in the works is staying under the cap, obviously. Our appropriative fund balance, again, you applied none last year. We're applying 1.6 million approximately. So that bump in foundation aid and the bump in appropriative fund balance really is what got us to the point of being able to support a budget for this year. And then some additional revenue, about $400,000 and change in other revenue. So that gave us the 101 million and change. So as I pointed out, Eastchester has a tax levy increase of zero and tax levy dollar increase of zero, actually, as a slight reduction, and we'll show you that in one of the other slides. But compared to 46 Westchester districts, people don't like the number zero, except when it has to do with your taxes and the increase. So the median increase amongst the 46 districts is about 2 and 1/4% this year, and we're at the zero mark. And taxpayers throughout our broader community will be paying about 1.67 million more. So we're at zero again, as I say, a slight decrease. Just some interesting data to look at. Where are we going to spend the money? I'd like to talk about some broad categories. Our Board of Education and Chief School Administrator, Finance, and Staff. Basically, that's your 1,000 code, and that really is your central administrative effort, and they're close to about 1.8 to 2 million. Your operations and maintenance, your 1,600 codes, that will take you 8 million, and that's all of your maintenance, plant operations, all custodial salaries, et cetera. Your printing, mailing, data processing, close to about half a million. And then we have insurance, assessments, BOCs, capital fees, tax surcharge, refunds, water tax, about another 1.2 million. I will point out that there were increases in the insurance area that we pointed out during the presentation, and some dramatic increases that I'll talk about in a moment. So the general support budget, as you can see, totals 11.9 million, just about close to 12 million. Now, the real action is instruction, okay? That gets you to your 2,000 code, your supervision, and then your 2,100 codes, and that takes you right up through your 2,800 codes, people personnel services into scholastic sports. That's where you ought to be spending most of your money, because that's the money for the kids. So that incorporates all of your teaching staff, many of the teachers you saw tonight, teaching assistants, monitors, administrative staff, leadership, et cetera, clubs, and that should be the major portion of your expenditure. So that totals just about $56 million. So those top two lines are reflected in the initial two lines, and I'm looking at a misprint. Total instructional services budget is not 101 million, okay? That is a mistake, but that's okay. You're allowed to make a mistake. The total instructional budget is about 56 million, all right? So even, right? Now, on top of that 56 and change and the 11, almost 12 million, let's round it out to about 68 million. Is that fair? We have transportation, 4 and 1/2, almost 4.6 million. That took a big hit. We had a 30% increase in certain areas of transportation, and I did mention it publicly, one particular vendor, Royal Coach, came in about 30% higher next year than it is this year, and went from about a million to 1.3. We're looking for ways to possibly address that next year and not have to pay that extreme, but when you only have one bidder, you're in a difficult position. And I'm not just talking Eastchester, I'm talking several cooperating districts in that effort. Another major area, obviously, is your employee benefits, that's your really your 9,000 code. And there you're talking your social security, your workman's comp, your TRS, teacher retirement system, your employer retirement system, your health insurance. All of those took a nice jump as well. So that supports your personnel, and basically on a benefits level, for every dollar we pay for one of our staff members, you're paying about 30 to 35% more for benefits, okay? And then our debt service totals about 6.2 million, and there's an interfund transfer in there for our summer school of 200,000. So I do want to point out that built into the budget is the transfer of the capital to get to the 101 million, and that I believe is 1.7 million, right? This year? Yeah, yeah. And built into that, I think it's important to note, there's a lot of work on our playgrounds, right? The three elementary schools, all new playgrounds, but we don't want to lose that. That's about close to 900 to a million, 90,000 to a million. Another 400,000 and change is built in there for sports, for boards, sports boards, message boards, scoreboards, et cetera. Money is built in there for work on different athletic fields, et cetera. So we're really doing a great deal despite the 0% increase. So, not to beat it to death, but let's look at it one last time. What will it cost me, the average taxpayer? Now, average is an important word, okay? There may not be an average taxpayer alive in Eastchester, I don't know, but on average, as the numbers fall, you are going to be paying, Mr. Average or Mrs. Average, $42 less, $42 less. Some folks will not be paying $42 less, depending on their accessibles, depending on changes they made in their homes, depending on a lot of other variables. You may be paying far less or somewhat more, but on average, the best we could do, you're talking about a reduction there of about $42. Zero is probably the best way to, most honest. So that's not bad. When 6% inflation, now we're claiming 5%. Last month it was 6 when we started this. Now it's 5, allegedly. We're still at zero, which is pretty good. That's below inflation. We talked a little bit about the revenue. It still comes mostly from the taxpayer. It is the Eastchester taxpayer who's carrying the bulk of the load here, 78%, all right? That's not jabby. State aid has perked up a bit, 16%. It's been lower, 12, 11%, 13%. So it's taken some of the burden off the taxpayer, which had been over 80%. And then other, other sources of revenue, tuition, miscellaneous revenue that we get from various sources, et cetera, that's more of a minor effort of 6%. Where are we spending our money? That's important. Remember the three categories that we showed you earlier. 74% of it is in program. That was that big chunk, 58, 59 million. Then we had another chunk of about 12 million. That's your capital, your 15%. And then your final grouping is your administrative at 11%, and that's how you get to your 102 million approximately. So thank you for your bearing with this throughout several presentations, with all the money and so forth and the data. Are there any questions that the board would like to ask before Madam President reads a resolution asking for you to adopt both the budget, estimated budget for next school year, and the tax report card? Or any questions from anyone the board would like to have ask questions? Vito?
I don't have a question, but I have a, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
For years, we've been improving program in this district every year, constantly, always trying to do things better, improve them, and we've had state aid increases in the past, and we've always asked for some of it to come back to the taxpayer. And this is the first time that it's ever come back to the taxpayer. And I just want to thank you on behalf of the community, the board, and the board itself for supporting this. It's a great opportunity, and it's a good thing. It's a good thing for everybody, so, thank you. Thank you for making it happen, and to your staff.
Yes.
Because I know you didn't do it alone.
No, far from it. And thank you to the board for supporting this.
You know, Dr. Valenti, just to echo Vito's comments, you know, it's really nice going back in kind of the history, right? And I think we look back in 26 years, right? As far back as we can look, we've never had 0%, right? So I think for the community, especially during these economic times, keeping that money in the taxpayers' pockets, I think provides a tremendous amount of value. And, you know, to Vito's point, finally, I think, you know, this board and you guys and the staff, being able to get this done this year was a tremendous effort by everyone. So again, I thank you. You know, some of us are on the Finance Committee, myself included, and really, all of the sharpeners that I dropped off to you, Lee, thank you for accepting all of them and helping us to figure this out. So thank you. Big difference in the community.
Thank you for the erasers, too, as we. Okay. Would the board want any other questions? Are you ready to move to a vote?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the proposed 2023 to 2024 budget in the amount of, wait a minute, my screen just, sorry. Okay, here we go. 101,856,200 dollars. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education shall present the following to the voters of the Eastchester Union Free School District on Tuesday, May 16, 2023. Proposition 1 shall the Eastchester Union Free School District of the Town of Eastchester, Westchester County, New York, adopt a budget for the school year 2023 to 2024 for the schools comprising said Eastchester Union Free School District in the gross sum of 101,856,200 dollars, and raise the necessary taxes required for said budget in one sum by tax upon the taxable property of the district.
Can I make that motion?
Yes. I know, we have to get used to this.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the resolution.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, Matt. Any further discussion? No? Okay, all in favor? All right.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to do the property tax report card?
Yes.
To read that one, too?
Yes. So the proposition passed unanimously for the budget.
Okay. All right, the next one is the property tax report card. Be it resolved that the Board of Education has reviewed and hereby approves the attached 2023 to 2024 school property tax report card for the Eastchester Union Free School District, and authorizes the Assistant Superintendent to submit the same in accordance with the law. All right, do we have a motion? Christine, do we have a second? Christie? All right, all in favor? Okay. Unanimous, thank you. Okay. Who would like to do the consent agenda? Anyone?
I could do it.
Okay, thank you, Jackie.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda, which includes the following: eight approval of minutes, nine personnel agenda, ten committee on preschool education and committee on special education recommendations, eleven business office recommendations, twelve other business items.
All right. Do we have a second? Judah? All right, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, future meeting dates, April 25th, May 2nd budget hearing, May 16th annual budget vote and trustee election. All right, we are up to comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public this evening?
I just have one comment.
Sure, no public comments tonight, it's quiet. Okay, Dr. Valenti?
Yeah. I'm pressing my button, and I'm not getting a red light, Kevin.
You're on.
Am I on?
You've got to let it go.
Well, that's even better. I don't see the red light, but as long as I'm on, I'm on.
I think she has a comment.
Oh, we do have a comment. All right. Then why don't you go first, and then I'll make my little announcement, because we're very happy with this announcement. It's a good way to end a meeting.
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation, and I'm so happy to hear about this program. Wonderful. Regarding the budget, I just have a clarification question. I see that the staff funding has increased by about 11%, but the curriculum supervision and staff development has actually decreased, so I was wondering how that is projected to work. And I just, you know, I'm looking for the rationale. It's not, you know, it's not a, I'm sure there's an explanation, I just would want to hear how that's, how that's working, yeah.
Are you asking about the program budget versus the capital versus the administrative, that percentage?
Well, more specifically, the staff.
The 79, the 11%? Is that what you're asking about? I missed.
Well, the curriculum supervision and staff development, if I'm correct, has decreased as a, from last year.
Oh, you're talking about the 2110, 400 code. We moved some money out of that for stipends that we pay teacher leaders. What we tried to do this year, for purposes of transparency, we have to report to the state and clarity, so we know who's budgeted where, we had the opportunity to move some leadership stipends out of there into the 2110 200 code, which is your personnel. So your 2,000 code is your supervision. I think that's what you're referring to. Is that the 2,000, what is it, 400, Lee, or 2, 100?
The 2110?
2110, yeah, yeah.
2110, 150.
Right. That is slightly lower. We moved some stipends out of that. Appropriately, they should be in the 2110 codes or 2,800 codes.
Which is the staff?
Right.
Okay, yeah, I don't know the codes, but yeah, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, you'll have all the codes tomorrow, they'll be online. Was that your question? Is that it?
Yes, because I saw that decrease and increase, so it's staff increase, but the supervision of the staff decreased, so I was.
It's simply reallocation of money amongst funds, if that explains it to you. Okay, yeah. So, having said that, the good news, today at about 3:30 PM, Susan Chester, our supervisor for ELA, became Dr. Susan Chester. So let's give her a big hand.
Very nice.
We invited her to tonight's meeting, but she's celebrating, obviously, with family. But certainly, we'll bring her back on June 6th when we honor our tenure teachers and acknowledge her as well as our new hires. But we're very proud of Susan. She worked hard. She did a doctoral work at Manhattanville College, and basically, it's surviving, right? And to get a doctorate is not easy. Look at some people around the table, they'll tell you. tell you tenacity is one of the major qualifications they have to bring to the table. So our commendations to Susan and kudos, and we're delighted for her, and we'll have a chance to see her personally and congratulate her on the 6th. Good. All right, thank you.
Great, that is wonderful. Yes, congratulations, Susan, we know you've been working so hard on that, so congratulations. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment? Anyone? Motion for adjournment? Okay. Judah, second? Okay, all in favor? All right, good night, everyone.
Okay, thank you.